Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And to say the pledge, we have a special guest here from our trade business. Mr. Rob Gilligan, the new governmental affairs director, governmental relations manager? That's right. For the Kansas Association of School Board. So, Mr. Gilligan, if you would step forward and lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for letting me embarrass you there for a second. Mr. Gilligan joins us from Emporia, where he hails. But he now works for the association. We get to spend a lot of his time in the walls, you know, under the dome. So, you know, we're all, this is really kind of like a pity, you know, party for you. We know it's gonna happen to you very soon. Our next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to move to adopt the agenda as presented? There's a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? None seen, all is in favor, I guess we're... Excellent. Our next item on the agenda is school highlights. And to get us started, I see our superintendent, Dr. Tiffany Anderson, ready to lead us to the first highlight.
What a wonderful way to start a meeting. We have our speech team that's here with us this evening, as well as parents. Ms. Fisher, who just gave us a tour of the van. Will you please come forward at this time? Share who is with us, make the remarks that you'd like to remake, make, and then we would like to just acknowledge you one additional time.
Thank you. Really, you know what we're here for. We're just excited about this new hotspot van and the future that it has and what it's gonna bring to the community and bring to Topeka Public Schools. And some of our folks have baked homemade cookies to be passed out to those who helped us build this dream and helped it come true. And so they put their work into it and we're putting our work back into it. So, Dr. Barnhart, would you stand, please?
Children, take cookies, please.
And Dr. Harrington?
We'll move both the little kids out so we can see them. They're all behind us.
They're a little skinny.
Yeah.
At some point, you know you'll have to introduce them.
And Mr. Robbins. And let's see, Angela Swisher. She's back there in the corner. Does anybody know who Angela is that can take her some cookies? And Molly Fisher. Give Molly Fisher some cookies. Raise your hand, Molly Fisher.
Hey there.
One more.
One more. All right. Have I kidnapped anybody or does anybody know? All right, now, see these people that are sitting down here? They help make big decisions for the school district. And so we wanna make sure that they each get some cookies. So everybody take some cookies to make sure each one of them gets some. Oh, did you? Uh, she has some more. Maybe Lily will be able to... Did everybody get it? We wanna thank everybody for your support. Now, guys, we wanna know who just gave us cookies. So I'm gonna take this microphone. So awesome cookies. That's our favorite dessert. Say your name. Who wants to go first?
Me.
Okay. Go ahead and look to the audience. It's good public speaking, Miss Fisher. So, tell them your name.
My name is Lily.
My name is Claudia.
My name's Santiago.
Well, do you wanna go to Tony later? Or why not?
Tony.
And Tony, do you know his name?
Paxton. Paxton.
Awesome Paxton.
Elena.
Elena. Perfect. Did I miss anybody back there? You wanna tell your name?
Dan.
Okay. And I see Laura's hiding behind Mom. All right. And so, parents, without your support, a lot of what we do wouldn't be possible. So we also acknowledge you and thank you for bringing them out. And thank you for the support you give to the team, as we do our administrators, and amazing Mrs. and Mr. Fisher. We thank you. Ms. Fisher, did you have, we took our front? We will blow that up, frame that. And so that way, we can have the creators of the van. And that can be posted or will forever hang within the building. So we will be sure to present you that with them the next week. Thank you so much. Thank you for having us. Thank you for letting us do this. For our additional school highlight, at this time, I would like to ask for several individuals. Ms. Lee has a student with her, I believe you have a student with you, my parent. Ms. Lee, will you come forward? So I had, we had this idea about opening a school district mobile food pantry. Ms. Lee had not even met me. And I just sent her an email and said, "Here's the idea." She said, "I got it." And she took it from there, gave it to her social worker, and didn't say another thing. It opened flawlessly and she was working it, you know, truly. So we asked Ms. Lee and a student who also was there to talk a little bit about the food pantry. You wanna start off, Ms. Lee, and introduce your student? Share what happened, and then turn it over to him. This guy is William Tibbetts. He has been with me for a little while. Dr. Anderson's right. She sent me an email before I even met her and saying, "Hey, I wanna do this food pantry." Well, Cap City, we're all about food because we never let our kids go hungry. We always have something in the building, whether they need a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, bologna sandwich, something to drink. So this was right up our alley. We have, we've had food drives in our school in the past. We continue every year to do that. So we were very excited to participate in a food drive. So, I went to my staff and they were all on board. Let's do this. And my social worker, Vicky Peoples, took it over. The first day was the 26th of August. And we had 12 sets of, no, 16 sets of parents called us and said, "You know what? I really, really need the food. I can't get there. I don't have transportation." For whatever reason, we said, "Don't worry about it. We'll take care of it." So in the process of serving 170 people, I think, or 170 families, we also took 16 families to their home food from this food drive. And it was amazing. And the kids were outstanding in their help. I can tell you that people that were driving by said, "Oh, my gosh. Where are these kids from? They are so polite. They are so kind." And we were proud to say what?
Cap City.
That's right. So, would you tell us a little bit about what you did? And your name, you're in grade?
William Tibbetts, ninth grade. What I liked about the pantry was everything. It was fun to help the people, help the community, fun to get out of the school. That's very exciting.
Board members, since Mr. Tibbetts is here, would you mind if he could have a picture with the board? And then he's representing all of the students. He volunteered to come this evening to represent the student body. There were several students there. And then, now that you have started, Mrs. Lee and your students have started the pantry. Again, the first mobile pantry. As well, the picture will also be framed and sent to you. And it'll say, "Creators of the first District 2 mobile food pantry." We thank you for your commitment. You are an amazing lady. And we thank you. Okay, is that your teacher? Where's your teacher at? You wanna introduce your teacher? Ms. Alexander, come on up. I know you're proud of him with all his... And your English teacher? All right, let's all kinda turn this way. Come on this way. Come on in. Ailish, did you come on over here, Ms. Alexander? Okay. Why are you sitting down? Okay, everybody's in here? We're good? All right. Ready? One, two, three. Good stuff.
All righty. Our next item on the agenda, well, it was fun. That was awesome. And so, for our members of the press, you know, for their information, every meeting, we start that way. It's that much fun all the time. Our next item on the agenda is public communication. I don't think that we have any tonight. So we are ready to dispose of our business by consent.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the Board President or the Superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the Board of Education.
There's a motion and a second. I give the chance to see the discussion on the motion. Ms. Carter?
Just a note, just a note, that there was a grant from the Topeka Foundation to Topeka Public Schools, which reminds me to remind myself and everybody else, the Foundation breakfast is coming up this month. This is September, right? Yes, so that's a really important event. And I always like going, so just make sure I remind everybody if we have got a ticket, think about it. This is an important organization that works only for Topeka Public Schools.
Excellent. There are no other comments. The only one I would add would just be to call everyone's attention to the proclamation that we have for Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month, which starts this month. It's something that we do for all of the really important times. We wanna recognize the culture that enriches our campus, our district. And I think it enriches our district, these many cultures that we celebrate. More so than, not to make it a competition, but we enjoy more richness in that way. We're unique in that sense. So when we pass this tonight, we'll actually sign this proclamation. It'll be posted around in all of the buildings in our districts. If no more, if there are no more comments, I think we're ready to vote. Our next item on the agenda is the district staffing update. And coming forward to the podium, I see Ms. Nolan. Tell us about where we are in human resources, people business.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you again about district staffing. This is a report on the 2015-16 school year and where we are starting with the 2017 school year. Okay. During the 2016 school year, the district experienced 399 separations. That's classified administrative and certified positions. This was actually a reduction over the 2015 school year. This was a tenth of a percent lower than 2015. The lowest decrease in separations was with certified staff. We had an attrition rate that was down 0.27% over the prior year. We recruited four new dual-language teachers from Spain this year. They'll be teaching at Woodson and Scott Elementary Schools. That brings a total of nine teachers from Spain that are working in that dual-language program for us at Scott and Woodson. Currently, we do have 13 vacancies remaining within the school district. We're continuing to recruit for those physicians. Surrounding districts are reporting similar kinds of shortages in teachers. I have spoken with Manhattan and Wichita. Manhattan's reporting that they're still trying to fill two positions in Manhattan. Wichita is having a little more trouble with 68 vacancies. I have not heard from Kansas City and Lawrence, but it's my understanding they're experiencing similar kinds of difficulties. Some of our neighboring school districts here in the Topeka area are doing similar things to what Topeka is doing, and that is rearranging how we provide some services because of our inability to find particularly school psychologists. Topeka Public Schools has four school psychologist vacancies right now. Auburn-Washburn has two. So we're looking for alternative ways of providing services because of those vacancies. The fall recruitment season officially begins in October, and we're preparing to hire for current vacancies as well as for positions for next year. I think we actually began our recruitment season early last week. We met with juniors and seniors that are majoring in education over at Washburn University and did a presentation to them on education as a career and inviting them to come to Topeka Public Schools to do their student teaching and consider us when they start looking for their careers in education. So I think that's the first time that we've begun recruiting them before they get out of college. As a brainchild of Marie Carter, and I'm sure that we'll have some kind of positive results out of that. On the non-highly qualified report, we've got good news on that. We reduced the number of teachers identified as non-highly qualified to 77 last year as compared to 109 the year before. If you recall, the non-highly qualified designation means that the teacher is licensed, but they're working to complete coursework to become fully certified, either in the subject matter that they're teaching or at the grade level that they're working in. Most of those positions are in special education, library, media, and science, and that's alternative licensing due to difficulties in finding teachers for those areas. This past summer, I worked with KSDE on a task force that was evaluating the teacher shortage in Kansas. The task force recommended expanding alternative licensing. And KSDE is making a proposal to the State Board of Education to include an elementary restricted license, a multi-year initial license, some different options for student teaching, and then a comprehensive science license. Rather than having multiple different areas that they have to be endorsed in to teach science, it would be one comprehensive license. We improved workforce diversity in 2017 by increasing the number of employees of color by 1%. If you recall, some of the previous presentations, Marie Carter told you about, we could improve diversity in Topeka Public Schools if we could just encourage our own students to enter education as a career. All of the talent that we need is right here in Topeka. In July, the district held a last-minute hiring fair. In that hiring fair, a young man walked in. Turned out, he was a graduate of Topeka High School. He was a graduate of Emporia State University. He had moved to Chicago and started teaching in Chicago, obtained his master's degree in Chicago. He was home this summer, visiting his mom. And his mom saw that we were having a hiring fair at Topeka Public Schools. Now, partly, I think, because he was homesick and partly because mom hoping to... He came down, he visited with us. And he is now teaching special education over at Eisenhower Middle School, which also happens to be where he went to middle school. So he is currently teaching in one of our middle schools. The Human Resources Department continues to encourage our students to consider education as a career. Ms. Caspers has 11 students enrolled in the teaching and training program through TCal. It's our hope that we can continue to recruit our own students and recruit diversity in Topeka Public Schools. What questions do you have for me?
Could you tell us, of the 13 vacancies that we still have, what disciplines are those in, what areas? And does that include the four school psychs?
Yes, it does. The coordinator of the Hope Street Elementary Physician Program over at Hope Street is vacant. We have two ROTC physicians open, Topeka West and Highland Park. Math physician at Chase, four school psychologists, a science physician at Robinson, two special education teachers, and a Title I math behavior interventionist, and then a language arts physician at Juilliard. So seven classroom and six support physicians.
Any additional questions at all from Ms. Nolan? What are, do we have any immediate plans? Or are there any things that are working in the background now to try to fill those 13?
Presently, we do have substitutes in those positions. We've actually succeeded in getting some of our retired teachers to come back and work a semester and cover those spots so that we can fill those jobs with graduates in December. We're also working with some alternative licensing. Dr. Barnhart gave me the good news today. She's shaking her head. We have a substitute covering one of our special education physicians who is really enjoying the spot. The school thinks this person's doing a great job and they're interested in coming along on an alternative license. So we are working to fill those right now. The ROTC physicians are technically qualified military, so we're working with the Army and the Air Force to fill those two positions.
Additionally, recruiting and retaining are two key areas of focus for us. As Ms. Carter sits in the back, she has arranged for several opportunities in the last several weeks, as has Ms. Nolan, who, Ms. Nolan was at Washburn. Was that last week?
That was last week. Guess what's, Ms. Wallace, who's sitting there?
As was teaching and learning. And Mrs. Carter arranged for the juniors and the seniors to meet with us so we can begin hiring the year out. And for those people, that will be student teaching, that we can already start meeting with those folks, sharing with them about Topeka Public Schools and recruiting. Additionally, there was another meeting this week with another university, also coordinated in part by Mrs., really in full by Ms. Carter, but the meeting was attended by multiple people in HR. And the recruiter is not here this evening, but I don't wanna be missed. And also mentioning Ms. Morristow. So some of the things that we've talked about. We had a recruitment meeting most recently, talking about administrative positions. But in addition to administrative for teaching positions, the recruitment effort will be beyond even what we're doing now, which includes using the non-traditional postings, the, you know, career builder, those kinds of things. Additionally, we anticipate trying to recruit from universities like S&amp;T for STEM positions and other universities that focus on those. We also will be using LinkedIn Ed of LinkedIn. We haven't used that in the past. Of various other social media pieces. Additionally, recruiting teachers that have left, also emailing teachers who are the Teachers of the Year and/or Assistant Principals of the Year. So we have a gamut of things we're gonna be trying and just kinda having fun with it. Kinda thinking of this like the draft and then trying to make sure we recruit the best player for the draft. So with that in mind, I do want to say that Mrs. Nolan, I have found to be exceptional in her willingness to try anything and everything to recruit the best and brightest, as are the members of her team. The last-minute hiring fair, many people would say, "What? A day or two to prepare," but they didn't. They held it. And we hired how many people from that fair?
Well, we ended up hiring altogether 12 people from that fair, but we got a special education teacher and a math teacher on a walk-in, which was unheard of.
So the flexibility and the willingness to think out of the box and to try new things as a team has been invaluable. So we thank you, Ms. Nolan, Mrs. Carter, and all who have played a part in making sure this effort can continue in a strong way.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nolan. I happen to be the shortest board you've ever had to get on.
We have most of the positions filled. It's short and sweet. Now, we do have a number that aren't, but they're not primarily classroom positions, so, you know, regular classroom positions. So we're excited about that. I also wanna mention that our deputy superintendent, Mr. Robbins, has been around the clock, sitting in on ideas, pitching ideas, getting interns, just doing all kinds of things to make sure this effort continues. So we're excited about the creativity today. The next item is superintendent updates. And really, my comments would have been acknowledging human resources and Mr. Robbins for the work that we're doing in this area of recruitment early and early hiring. Beyond that superintendent update, I also want to make sure to mention that as we've gotten through our first part of the school year, one of the new things that we're doing is making sure that student work is posted for the board. So tonight, we're highlighting Quincy's artwork, and it'll be up over the course of the next month. So if you look around in the boardroom and right outside on the bulletin board is our pieces from Quincy. Additionally, there are student writing samples, and we thought appropriately so since we only have one bulletin board. On the way to teaching and learning, second graders have written about their first day of school. That's from McCackren. So if you are so inclined to read a little bit about second graders and their pictures are there. I just happened to be in the school and saw it posted in hallways. And I said, "Can we have 10 or 12 of those?" And they delivered those. So on the way to teaching and learning, those are posted. And then next month, we will be highlighting another school. So we want to make sure to acknowledge that. Our NEA representative met with us as well this week, and she gave comments about the beginning of the year. So my superintendent update, I want to defer to Mrs. Harrison to share how the first part of the year, from the teacher's perspective, has gone. See, all members of the team were always prepared. She didn't know that I was gonna even ask her to...
Well, first of all, I would like to thank Dr. Anderson and the board for a really great convocation. I think that just about every person, it doesn't matter if you're a teacher or a parent, a teacher, a custodian, et cetera, everyone felt like that was a really great way to come back to school. We appreciated there were some retirees, some PTO parents and students out with signs cheering people on, the band out there and the cheerleaders. It was just a really nice way to come back to school and get excited. We particularly enjoyed Darren Hicks's comments. And I've had a lot of folks say that, you know, "This is why I teach, is to reach that student." And so he was able to really personify those children out there in the classroom that, you know, we are all trying to reach. So I thought that was outstanding. I think our challenge is to keep building on that. It's really great to have that energy and just continue that momentum as the school year goes on. I think, you know, going back to school is always hard. There are always little blips and that kind of thing. The other thing that I would like to mention is we have a number of teachers from various associations in Shawnee County, Waburn County, and OSH County. We get together once a month and kind of talk about what's going on in our districts, what kinds of things are we doing. We plan professional development activities, things like that. And one of the things right now is people are really excited about what's going on in Topeka Public Schools and are very interested in what we're doing. They're looking to us as some leaders for what will be happening in this region. And that's a really exciting development for us. That's about all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Those are all of the updates. I think being the first part of the year, it's appropriate to hear from the NEA president on behalf of teachers. So we're excited about the start. We have a little bit over 14,000 students. And next week, our new magazine... We have a little bit over 14,000 students, and next week, uh, our new magazine will be distributed. It will be mailed to businesses, given to parents, and you can look forward to receiving that in the next seven to 10 days. It's when we hope it gets out.
Excellent. Okay. Well, so, Ms. Harson, anytime you have a report like that, you'll always be welcome. Our next item on the agenda, proposed policy changes, and it looks like Ms. Kelly.
Yes, we have three proposed changes for you. Uh, I'm going to go from the bottom up, actually, on the list that I've given to you. 6150 would amend our graduation requirements policy to remove a barrier that we now place on kids from getting high school credit for algebra, or for first-year algebra that's taken at the eighth-grade level. Um, I believe we've done that because of a Regent's Regulation concerning qualified admissions, but there is nothing that prohibits us from allowing that, uh, eighth-grade credit to, to Countess High School earn credit, so we want to take away that barrier. That's the only change in that policy. Uh, the next one up is Policy 1039 about smoking at board meetings, and this involves only smoking if we are at a facility that's not a facility owned by us. And what the, the changes in this policy, uh, update the statutory reference to the Kansas Clean Air Act, um, its statute number has changed, and also it includes electronic cigarettes in the type of smoking that's banned. We've done that in all of our other smoking policies. This is the last one to get updated. And then finally, the policy on board meetings, 1032, um, basically two major changes. One would allow us to place an item on the agenda as an action item if we know that it's an item on which we're going to request that you take action. We think that if we know that ahead of time and that if that's posted before the act, the agenda actually goes live on the Friday before the board meeting, that it's actually more transparent to the public to let them know that we're going to take action rather than having it as a discussion item in which we then emergency up because we know it needs action. So that's the first of the changes. The second of the changes would, would move public communications from the beginning of the meeting to, to the end of the meeting. Uh, that has been suggested that we, that we do that. I've talked it over with Dr. Anderson. She said she really isn't committed one way or the other. She, you know, she'd recommended that we do it because it would help to potentially shorten meetings, but, uh, she's not wedded to it one way or the other. The policy committee and its discussion did have some concerns about maybe moving it, so I've left it, proposed is moved, but I don't think there'd been any problem if we, if we choose to leave it or move it, so, those are the changes.
And no, part of the reason of the suggestion, which again, I'm not committed one way or the next, in part is so that when students come and they present, like they did this evening, um, that students are able to do that and depart, and then we proceed on with business, which at times answers questions people may have, and then the, uh, piece at the bottom would be for the, uh, uh, public address. However, if we know several people have signed up or there's an item that's a hot topic, then I would suggest at that time, as we've said previously, we amend the agenda and we move it back up, but perhaps still after the students perform. So students, sometimes meetings are a bit late, so kindergartners, first graders can do their thing and leave. That was really why the suggestion is there, but I defer to the board to make a decision on that.
Ms. Kerr.
Um, I think in our discussions, we really believed pretty firmly that it probably needs to stay where it is at the moment now. It comes right after proclamations. It's, it's before we do our, um, business by, disposition by consent, before we do any of the other stuff. Um, because it, to have you come up to talk about something that's going to be happening, um, we need to make sure that they know that they can talk to us, make a presentation to us about things that are going to be discussed that night, or things that they want us to discuss at some future date. Um, we don't have any interaction with the folks when they make their presentations. We accept their information, um, but I think it's really, um, backwards to ask them to sit through a whole meeting because we're, we will make decisions sometimes, actually when we pass, um, the business by consent, particularly if there's a personnel issue, that it happens in the consent count, under the consent category. So we need to make sure that people feel free to say and tell the board what their passions are or concerns are for some of the actions that we may be taking that night. Um, so I think it's part of transparency. Uh, it's worked well for us. We have a time limit, you know, we have a 30-minute time limit for those, um, presentations, and we've been, no matter how controversial some of those issues were, we're always able to keep that 30-minute piece there and, and move on. Um, it's hard to sit there and listen to people really unhappy with you, and you know you're going to be making a decision that they're not, may not like, um, but that's part of the big, being paid the big bucks that were paid, right? Um, that's part of our job, and, and I, and I just felt really, I was just really strongly and committed to making sure that people could say what they needed to say before we took any actions that they were concerned about, so, um, it served us well. Um, it really hasn't delayed things, um, and we've had some pretty controversial pieces to deal with, so. And, you know, when Mrs. Kelly mentioned there was discussion, I suggested she just pull it off of this agenda because it's not a strong, uh, suggestion, um, and so had I known that, that's an item that easily can be pulled, but I would suggest if kids come and present, that perhaps somehow it's amended so that somehow they can present and leave, um, that might be a thing you want to think about doing that. What, what are your thoughts on that? Well, they just about do, if you look at the, the way it's set up now. We have school highlights, so they, that comes right after the adoption of the agenda, and we always do that first, and we have the kids do their things. Once in a while, children want to, um, testify in front of us also, and that comes right after the school highlights. So they don't have, nobody, our, our audience always disappears after we have the school highlights and those kinds of, um, things. We, we lose our audience. Um, now, we'd like, maybe, you know, we'd like them to sit through and know what we really do, but in terms of the community, the, the kind of our community members, um, we, we try to make sure that they are the first on the agenda, and then we do the business after that, after we've heard from them, after they've presented to us. We even, I, just a side piece, we even, we used to have staff presentations way down there, the end of the meetings, and we used to have to make our poor staff sit through all that stuff. We changed that because we thought that wasn't for our others, so, um, it has served as well as, as, um, as after the school hi, after the proclamations.
I, I totally agree with Ms. Kerr on, on this aspect. The other thing, um, and maybe we should table, uh, Policy 1032, we need to add into that board meeting policy, uh, policy about taping, um, the, the board meetings. We don't have anything in that at this point, and I, and Ms. Kelly gave some information, and I've read all the information, and there's some, some things that we probably need to look at, uh, and probably should look at before we tape everything, but...
And Dr. Morrison, I'd prefer that we look at that as a separate policy from this particular policy, but I agree, we do need to look at, at some of those issues. But I think we can still take action on this policy, and, and I, I mean, the reason I left it on was because I wanted to get the feeling of the entire board as to whether you'd rather move it or not move it, and then when we bring it back next week, it will be for final action by the, for action by the board with whatever your decision is or the consensus of the board is tonight in terms of whether you want to move it or not move it.
Sure, yeah. I, I guess if I had to weigh in one way or the other, I would probably say I think it's fine the way it is. We have, uh, public comments right after our school highlights, and oftentimes, if we do have, uh, students or, or anyone who's going to speak, uh, and we've got their issue toward the end of the agenda, that's a really long agenda, we will amend it and move theirs up early, so they don't have to sit through all of the really stimulating, awesome things that we do, uh, late into the night. Uh, and we can also, our rules allow for chairs for obvious to move it if we have missed the opportunity of doing it and amending the agenda, so.
And if I could ask, uh, President Woods, um, you know, if in fact, given hearing Ms. Kerr giving your comments, that we would, you know, prefer to remove the request to, to change it, given that it's not a, again, a strongly, uh, suggested item, but a suggestion, and as you've talked through what it looks like generally, as well as your strong feelings, just hearing that alone would have led me to say, "Let's leave it where it is and continue on." And we've had some very short work meetings, and every now and then, if it goes even longer, that's okay too, but I think it's been as efficient as we possibly could imagine anyway. So I thank you for the comment, and I would ask for the whole board that if we could pull that item, because I no longer want to present it as a requested item.
Okay. So what I will do for next time then is just switch the public communications back to number six on the agenda, so, and, and leave the other changes, uh, in the policy as it goes back for final action?
The other piece about action items.
Right. Is that acceptable?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and I think that concludes actually everything on our agenda tonight.